Mr. Mayor, I would like to call for the board.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to call for the board. All due respect to Mr. Rivera, we have not voted on him to be in that seat yet, and he should not be in that seat.
Mrs. Bisho, then we'll just go through the roll call right through to see if we can find two.
Sure, but may I promise?
Here.
Councilmember Catherine Carey?
Here. But I'd also like to see Mr. Rivera removed from the table since he's the topic of discussion in the vote itself.
Okay, very well. He, I mean, go ahead and do this right now. He was appointed through the exact same process through which you were appointed. So, he can step down and vacate his seat if you raise your hand and do the same.
That's not what's on our agenda for this evening. If you would like to remove me, that would be a separate meeting. This is a special agenda that we have two items to address. And the first item is the appointment of a District Two council member with compliance with the town charter and with the Resolution Two-Lo-Two-Two-Seven and the Florida government and the sunshine laws. The second on our agenda would be to review and establish an appointment process for vacant town council seats so that fair and legal appointments can be made to the town council. Quickly addressing mine, I have no idea how they did it. And I don't know that any of y'all have reviewed it. I mean, I know they did it by an appointment of a vote, but I was not aware of the scale or the page itself. None of that was revealed to us. I'm not insinuating that was revealed to Mr. Rivera, but the handling of it with the seat of vacant, the vacant seat of Mr. Rivera has so many flaws that we need to address here tonight. That's why the meeting was called.
Right, so, and again, whether, just like Mr. Rivera may not have known, you may not have known, but the process was identical for how you were appointed and how he was appointed. You were at the council meetings where you were appointed. I went back and watched it, and the only, the only way I even knew how to, how to follow the process, because if you recall, in January, I had a lot of questions. I said, hey, are we sure there's a process? Are we sure we don't just want to vote on this? You were the council member who said, and it's on camera, no, no, the scores are at the votes. So I said, fine, and that's, let me get through it, let me get through it. And so, there were scorecards turned in for you as well. At the very, very end, the town clerk at that time came, stood up and said, based on the scorecard, this is who the winner is. The same exact thing that we did for Mr. Rivera. So whether or not you're aware of it, the process was identical. So why, why is it not valid for him, but it was valid?
Well, I personally am going to question your handling of it and your voting of it. It was a blatant disregard for the rules of the sunshine law, a slap in the face for the community of Fort White, a slap in the face for us as council members, as well as the four individuals that were in the hat to be considered as the vacant seat.
Okay, hey, so we can talk about-
And you can throw that back on me all day, but that's not what this discussion is about. And you, as mayor, do not have the right to change the special meeting request of agenda items.
Okay, so two separate issues.
Can we get back to rules problems? I would like to hear my presence.
Yes, okay, go ahead. Mrs. Bisho, please. Can I play the roll call?
Councilmember Merrick's here. Councilmember Robert Philpoe's here.
Here.
Town clerk giving me Roberto Rivera and Rosie Shook's here.
Did you get Rivera?
And Councilmember Rivera.
Yeah. Okay. Addition, so before we just jump into it, let's get through this. additions, deletions, changes, and approval of the agenda. Now, I know you say issue with whether or not I can amend the agenda, but in the agenda packet, in the very first, the very first item of the agenda packet, as a matter of fact, in your special meeting request, you reference the ordinance that gives me the authority to amend agenda items. Now, you can make a motion, and if the council votes, that can be overturned. You have that recourse, but to say that I don't have the authority, that, that's not true for the ordinance that you included.
You don't for a special meeting because that's the point of the special meeting, to call attention to something that the mayor would not address or fail to address, and other council members too, being required to bring that to the attention.
Where does it say that?
It doesn't say that, but it doesn't say what you're wanting it to say.
Yes, "Agenda shall be prepared by town staff, subject to the review and edification of the mayor of the town."
No.
Okay, so-
I did.
Okay, so-
I'll get through it.
So make a motion, make a motion to change the agenda.
I'll make a motion to change the agenda to read to what I've already said agreed. His vote not be counted at this time.
It will be counted.
Have you counted it, or what? He was wrong.
You're sabotaging the whole process. If this is my last meeting, I can be fine with that, but if the town of Fort White accepts the way you're running the government, I don't even have words for that.
Okay, so make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so all in favor of changing the meeting agenda to what it was previously? Say aye.
No.
Aye.
You said aye, okay, all opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, so it stays as it is?
Okay, no reason. All voting has been done in public.
Okay.
We turned them, we turned the voting in fighting.
Right.
Far as I know, you took possession of it. You had our votes all week. You're no voter too. That's definitely not right. Coming here, they come up back there somewhere, counting them. That was not the way hers was done. Hers was done right in front of us. We turned them in at the meeting that night, and they did a tally that night at the meeting while we were having the meeting, right here public. Not back there, not at home all weekend. That's how hers was handled. I'm the only one on this board that was here when she was put in office.
Why, why are you under the impression that I took-
I'm saying you could have. I'm saying you could have.
You could have.
No, I couldn't. I couldn't come there and get them. They won't give me stuff like that. From what I understand, they come there and ask for them, and she said, you got them. Then she said, well, I don't know where they're at. Well, she didn't want to collect them, so she shouldn't know where they're at if they was in this building. They shouldn't sit in this building all weekend. These people got keys to this building. I don't have a key to this building.
Okay, sir.
So you asked me, I'm, I'm telling you why I think that's wrong. There's some way they all got to be counted in public, and it wasn't done that way.
So we'll go ahead and open it up for a public comment. Raise your hand. I'm sure we'll have a few-
I turn in a public comment card.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
All right. The report was not in compliance with the town charter section thirteen, which states in any event of the town council vacancies, the town council shall appoint, to fill out the balance of the term, goes on to say that in any event that there is not a form to appoint, a replacement will be made by the governor. It's clear that the appointment required from the jury until so by the council. Town Resolution R-22, that's twenty-seven, established rule procedure for Fort White Town Council passing adopted September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. All official actions of the town council member and the mayor shall be by motion second, vote on the motion. There is no motion second or vote on the appointment of Mr. Rivera. This fact alone makes the appointment of Mr. Rivera unofficial. Two wrongs don't make a right. And on your point to Ms. Terry, the charter trumps resolution. The fact that the appointment of Mr. Rivera was not in compliance with the town charter and the R-22, that's twenty-seven, makes it invalid. There were several other sunshine violations by the town, open government laws, state of Florida, the Florida government sunshine laws during the selection and appointment process, including but not limited to the selection process, or any voting by the council members was completed prior to the meeting and was not done in its entirety in the sunshine law, in the sunshine. The sunshine laws require that every step in the process conducted by the council, not just the last step of the process, must be completed in the sunshine to be compliant with the sunshine law. There are comments requiring the council's score sheet to be sent into town hall by a headline imposed by itself. So that access to them, and the fact that the public records request was made, and it stated that they were in your possession and you elected for them, that's violation of the sunshine law. I want to remind you that potential violation of the sunshine law is secondary misdemeanor. And it's also terms of fines, can't carry, they could deal, et cetera, et cetera. So I urge you to lead our thing, clear the appointment of Allyn. You violated discrimination laws whenever you refused to score the white candidates. In fact, in sports, I'm the only one that's any candidate. You took away or watered down or diluted the other town council members' scores by intentionally only filling out one score sheet. That's blatant, that is blatant. That's a disrespect to this council. They trusted you to participate in that process fairly, and for you to try to rig the outcome, that's unethical, that's a violation of state laws, federal laws, and local laws. Furthermore, I want to say that the selection process was not transparent or fair. Several council members emailed you for-
Ms. Bisho, one second. So are you, you're commenting only on the first agenda item?
Oh. Yes, but I put on one.
Okay, you want to go right now? Okay.
No, I mean, if you'd like to become a player for the second, I can.
Well, yeah, because there's other people, because there might be more people who have them. Anybody else want to comment on, oh, let me do this opportunity. This claim that the clerk or the assistant clerk said that I removed any document from town hall is false as a matter of fact. Okay, so, and, and just, I just want people just to think and reason through this with me for a second. These scorecards were sealed. Okay, so that means that anybody who wanted to request them through a public records request could not receive them. So why would I take a sealed document from town hall that people already can't request just so that people can't request it? And then bring it right back so that everyone can request it? Why would I do that? The document was sealed. Nobody could request it. You talked about tampering.
I didn't say tampering.
You, you, you said I could have. You said I could have. It could have been changed. I'm pretty sure half of the state of Florida has seen them. At this point, has anyone accused me of tampering with them? No, I didn't, because they were not in my possession. They were sealed, and they were kept sealed until right before the meeting, when the clerks counted them, just as they had been done last time, so that everybody could find out at the same time. That is how that went. That is a matter of fact. So I, like, I really don't know where all this other information came from. Okay, so I just wanted to address that because you accused-
It came from the town staff.
That was flat, false. It did not come from the town staff.
Oh, yeah, no, it didn't. It's another thing.
So, okay, anybody else have a, a public comment for the first item? Stu, go.
Thank you, Ron. I'm here as a citizen at this podium. I've been doing this for forty years, and I've never seen anything like this show. The expert to delete it, never in my whole life. But to get this thing with these envelopes, clear by the way, I was the one that said, I was told you took the envelopes. And then I was told, maybe you didn't take the envelopes. And then I asked where they were, and I was told, maybe they're in the office, but we don't know where they are. But if you're telling me they got sealed envelopes, and nobody knows where they are, and then I'm told that you've taken them, then that's an issue. So that's me. As if anybody heard it and heard that, they heard that from me, because I came down here and put in the public right in the course of justice. The fact that the envelopes were sealed, there are no homes. There's no rules. Didn't say when the envelopes were opened, when they were supposed to be closed, when they were sealed, how they were sealed, how they were delivered. None of that. So that's just a spurious argument. That means nothing. The fact that they were opened in the back room, I would suggest you all go back and look at what happened in Lake City with those folks that weren't publicly available at one time. That's a duress, but that's a violation of the sunshine law. And the way that's fixed is the courts have found from time to time, is that you got to do it over. So if you just said that they opened them in the back room, that's just crazy. And there was no list that said when they were going to open them. Well, I gave you there an ass room, then they had to unseal them. There was nothing in any rule, any regulation, anything written down, other than hearsay, and I never even heard that, that those envelopes had to be sealed until the meeting. Clearly, anybody that knew anything about government, which clearly you're on like, kind of like side of that, like L and D side of that, is knows that those kind of things have to be opened in public. I mean, that just only makes sense. And my second thing is, this agenda should never, this has nothing to do with the approval. The charter states that either you or the city council can call a special meeting. It doesn't say the city council, two members, at least two members of the city council need your permission, need your approval, and need your good housekeeping seal approval on what those people want to discuss during the meeting. It was narrowed now, which is what special meetings are supposed to be for, is the District Two seat, and that is clearly Mr. Rivera. See, he was sitting there right there. Mr. Rivera will tell you if you were asked him. We never saw a vote to put him on. The charter says that the council shall approve. The way the council approves things in the whole world is by motions and votes, and that was not done. So this really needs to be, only about the District Two, I want to wrap it up, because it wasn't. And you unilaterally changed the agenda. This vote is bull crap. But you unilaterally changed the agenda? Where's the information for the board to act on? Where's the original meeting norms that the two council people put? Where are the background material that you had to show that it was done differently, and that was the reason that you changed it? You've done nothing, and you disrespected the process and the people of this community. And I'm very disappointed, Ron.
Thanks, Stu. So, that is not what the clerk said. And before you left town hall, they told you, Stu, that is not what we said. They said that to you. Now, what you took and what you ran with as a journalist to get clicks is different than what they said, because I immediately verified with them what it was that they said, and they said no. And when he accused you of that, we said, hey, Stu, that's not what we said at all.
This is he said, she said, this is irrelevant.
Okay, but when you keep accusing me of-
I know what I am.
So, okay, does anybody else have a public comment to make on the, my important? When you get up there, just stick your name, please, sir.
Being a pastor, um, so this last week, and I was really happy to see that we had a new mayor, and we were going to get cohesive and everything, and then, wow. We need to work together for this town, and this is not what's happening, this fighting is not what's happening. We're not working out, and it doesn't help that we've all seen the scorecards, and you scored zero on everybody else, on every category, on everybody else except Mr. Rivera. No disrespect to you, I don't know you at all, but you can't say, I'm going to use James as an example, sorry, James, you can't say that he's a zero on, that he lives in Fort White, or that he's a zero as far as council experience, and, oh, and how, how is that okay? Because you have absolutely stacked the deck to Mr. Rivera, for whatever reason, I don't know. That's not cool, and that's what everybody's upset about. It, it has to be fair. What is the point of everybody voting if you're just going to negate their vote altogether? And doing something like that does not help to make a cohesive experience here for this town, and you need to be about the town, the people of Fort White that are sitting here that care. We are a small town, but we are, we have big hearts, and we, we need to be together, and we have to, you have to do things fair. So you doing that, I, I'm going to call you out on that. Not everybody else likes to get up and speak, unless y'all know, I will, no matter who, but it's not cool, it's not okay, and it needs to be redefined. It needs to be scored fairly. You need to be transparent with everybody. Sit here and do it right now. Look at, pull their sheets out and score them fairly, all of them fairly, right now. And again, no disrespect to you. I don't think that you gave them a bunch of money so you could get a position. We live in Fort White. But you have to do right by your people, by all of the people here, and it doesn't feel like that.
Yeah, I mean, as far as scoring and how I scored, just to, just to give a response, so, again, just a preface to start with, I, I agree with you that it should be by, by motion and a vote. That was what I brought up in the January meeting. But that's not, that was not the consensus of the council, fine. If you're, so, those scorecards are very arbitrary. At the end of the day, who I voted the highest was the person who I, in my opinion, was going to be best for Fort White.
But you didn't vote the highest, you voted zero on the highest. That's zero.
You know what I'm saying? The person who I voted the highest. And if what you're saying is, if what you're saying is, it should have been a one instead of a zero, because the zero, one, but I mean, as far as who I vote, how, on an arbitrary one line with no criteria, with no, everybody gave different votes. Some people gave zeros. I wasn't the only one that gave zeros. Yes, I gave straight zeros. To me, that was a no vote. If I didn't want that person, I voted them zeros, the person I didn't want. I gave the tent. I'm not saying everybody agrees with that. I'm saying that's, I'm saying that's-
Everybody should have voted that way.
Yes.
Everybody should have.
You said, you said, you said it's not in this office.
You're right, man.
I think, first of all, I appreciate y'all coming out. Obviously, parking lot and Maggie's place over there, the whole yard was filled with cars. If this is allowed, we are in trouble. And that, I don't mean get up here and stomp the guy, you know, but you could not have said it more elegantly. As a teacher, I've never, ever experienced anything so wrong with the scoring mechanism. We've never, you can't do a spelling bee or a push-up contest without a matrix and rubbit to accompany it and have, you, y'all know me, I get off on tangents. You can't fill out a restaurant card without it having the little code there of what to do. When it was my time of being appointed, I didn't question any of that, because I was appointed and I was happy, life goes on. So I didn't question any of that until this arose. You could not have done a more flagrant disrespect to all of us in this room. I have nothing against you, and I know you're in the hot seat, I'm sorry. My candidate, if you do by number of points, it was for Lonnie. I'm not here tonight to advocate for Lonnie. I'm here tonight to advocate for the town of Fort White. This is an injustice. This can't happen. I mean, y'all have, again, keep your hands in your pockets, as they say in the classroom, but you cannot allow this to happen. You cannot.
Any other public comments?
So I think that I'm here tonight as a teacher of the whole lot. I live the whole lot. Number one, where y'all going to select? Opening the seats in the back room, that's just a favorite violation of sunshine law. Number two, you go score with points. The way it works, you go to Mr. Coon's, if you say, all right, Mr. Coon scored, so it's the highest. So that's one vote. Monica voted, so it's the highest. That's one vote for them. You voted this one high, that's one vote for them. Then Catherine voted, I hope you heard that. All right, Catherine voted. So then whoever got the most, not the, not the highest score, whoever got the votes number ones, that's, that's perfect. Whoever got the second one, that's the second one. At that point, at that point, you say, all right, we got this one that scored, had the votes from the council as number one, this one was number two. Then you say, do I have a motion for number one? No, no motion for number one. All right, yes, say the motion for number one. Do we have a second? Y'all have a second. Okay, so now we're going to take a vote on number one. If the vote fails, then you go to number two. Do I have a motion for number two? Who's got the most scores in the council? Which is the second, then you vote on that one. If that one vote wins, if that one don't win, you go to number three. Then you go to number four, if that one don't win. If none of them win, or you got a tie or whatever, then you can vote your sort of, or you can vote for the governor to appoint somebody, if you can't do it yourself. But the way y'all done it, it's clear violation of sunshine law and not, not the way government is done. Now, I will say, I've never really paid attention to how y'all done it before. I didn't get involved for a whole lot, but I watched it several days, and-
Where is that process documented that you're referring to?
In court session.
I'm just asking for reference, which court-
And with the voucher, attorney probably brought that out there, brought that to y'all.
I was just asking because we went over this entire process, how it was going to be done before it was done, and we didn't come up-
But it was done, but the way it was done, it was done at the end of the last meeting, the mayor called out, our city clerk to the back, who won? She called out, well, this Mr. Rivera won. We will swear amen. I'll jump up and swear amen. The mayor jumped up and swore amen, just, all right, meet the government. No votes or nothing. That is not how it's done. Huh?
To wrap it up.
Wrap it up?
Hey, good job, Rocky.
Everybody else did a very calm, calm, and they won't say wrap it up. I got you, baby.
Yeah, everybody else, they wasn't timed in to have it.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was, all right, guys. So, yeah, like I said, the way that I needed to do, the way that I knew how to do this process was by watching the video of how it was done last time. It was done the exact same way. Would you like to give me a public comment for the video?
But I did, yeah, I'll hold that thought.
I have seven seconds, I'm only going to say that. I'm dying on that hook. I live in Fort White, I'm going to live here forever.
Or everybody, everybody, please.
So my question is, we have Catherine that was appointed, and we have Monica that was appointed.
She come in unopposed.
Yeah, you, you came in.
She was unopposed.
She was leaving, and nobody ran against her.
That's right.
But was Catherine?
Was she elected?
Well, she was, she was elected by y'all, but was she motioned to be?
No.
So, okay, that's what I'm saying. So she was, were you motioned whenever you came in, or you didn't have to be?
Correct.
But she had it this morning.
And I was on the agenda. This, this past time, it wasn't even on the agenda, it was like a footnote.
I thought it was. I thought it was.
It wasn't agenda, I got it.
Nobody opposed her either.
Nobody opposed her either.
Well, that's not, that's not.
Back in the day, six months ago, nobody opposed. Not, 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 not in none of these meetings.
The point is, she was appointed by the town council at that time. And y'all did not vote for him, like you're saying that he didn't do him. And so you gotta go through the, who makes the legislation, so he said it. Nobody did that. Nobody seconded it. And we didn't do that for Mr. Rivera. Uh, and I agree, all the votes in your past, you know, I didn't come to you first of all. Oh, y'all voted by the tier. So then, and the last meeting, last time y'all voted was Ronnie. Y'all voted appoint system, something like this. But it was all done at the desk.
We did that for her too, by the way.
So throw his ballot out and recount the votes.
Can you read it?
Throw your ballot out. And yeah, throw your votes out and recount the four.
She's going, she's going.
I'm just standing here because I'm trying to, but I think it's Shelley Brown.
What is it?
Shelley Brown. I live in a community, I don't live in a city for life, so sometimes I feel like I don't have a say. And I really want to because I shop here, our kids went to school here, we're huge advocates of doing things in the community. Love Ms. Catherine's idea. She's got wonderful, awesome ideas. Don't build forever. We, I love this town. Our family loves it. I'm very disappointed with the whole zero rating thing. That just, I'm sorry, I don't know you, I don't know Mr. Rivera, but I really was excited to see him come in as a mayor. I was so happy to see a new council start. And all the drama away and it's worse than ever. And I'm very, I don't understand, I pay, I do, I'll give people notes and say when they do something wrong in a restaurant, in a retail, I, I do all that. Vote to one to 10. How can you do a zero when it says strictly right on there, one to 10? That's, that's sad. I'm sorry. It's so sad, so not explainable in my eyes. And we saw it all and, and we seen all this, well, we, we're embarrassed to call the county, I hate to say this. I love our town. I want to see us be like a Ranford, like a High Springs. But no, I have all this drama and I'm done with it. I so wanna have a nice, happy community, like so many of y'all want. And I love us. I want us to get along. I'm gonna go home and pray about it. And that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My my argument over this whole thing is the process. And Shelley, I know you pretty well, so I know you're trying to be polite. And we did not talk in advance of this, but you just sabotage the system. It's nothing less than an egregious act of sabotage to win your candidate. And I'm not against the candidate. You scored very high with me. And I, I'll be quite frank with y'all. I called Ronnie and talked with Ronnie Fraser about Mr. Rivera. And Ronnie was a hundred percent behind Mr. Rivera. And my score sheet was not perfect. I think everybody who scored the candidates made errors. But we, and I'm interrupting, Monica, I'm speaking for you, Bill, interrupt. We made human errors where sir, Jacob, you did an intentional malicious act to stat you. And I just do not know how they can be accepted. And I do not know how our, how our attorney does not recognize that thing's wrong. And I'll blow my teacher horn until doomsday. If I did something like that, I'd be gone. I would be gone. There was not gonna be a conversation.
Has it been established that the attorney supports the appointment as being legal?
He's mute, to my knowledge.
I'm asking you if you've asked him, because he was Have you asked him?
Mister, you haven't asked him. I'm not gonna speak unless you ask him your question. So I have said, you're mute until you ask him your question.
Well, then I'll ask the question. What is your expertise on tonight's?
Here's what I know. Thank you for asking. When I came on this board Mitch Copeland, now Judge Copeland had been the attorney for me it's my understanding that when there were vacancies on the board that this process is how they were resolved. Now, I'm going to make an assumption. Clearly understand that I'm going to make an assumption that at some point, either during Judge Copeland's tenure or a prior attorney, I don't know how long he represented. That the council made the decision to use this process, the ballot voting process, to replace vacancies on the council. Because the charter is extremely, it just says, the council appoints a vacancy within 60 days or else they have to send it to the governor. So when I came on the board, the first person that was replaced on the board was Travis, or Travis King came on the board. The process that we're all here talking about tonight is exactly how it happened. I don't know if, when the, the ballot sheets and, and I'm not on social media, I guess the, the ballot sheets of, you said everyone seen, I haven't, I haven't seen, or what everyone voted. I've not been on social media, but floating around. But I don't care, it's a practice. I'm just making a point. Is that the process, the process was the sheets everyone fills out a score. I, I don't see what you're building. I, I believe what you guys have said. He voted zero. I, I have no doubt. I don't know if Ms. Connie at the time stood at that podium or sat at that desk and opened the document and read them all. But that's how Travis King got on the board. After Travis King, Jason Florence went through the process. Everyone filled out sheets. They gave them presumably to Connie. I don't know if Connie stood at that podium or sat at that desk and opened the document and said Travis, or Jason Florence. And they sworn in. The next person to come on the council was you. Same process. Score sheets filled out, turned in. I don't know if Ms. Connie stood at that podium or sat at that desk and opened the documents. And you were sworn in. The next person to come on the board was Mr. Rivera. The process was repeated. The score sheets were filled out. They were turned in. And I will agree, she sat at that desk, which I would argue is not outside the sunshine. Everyone in this room can see that out there. She opened the document. And if someone wants to make a plan about that, that's fine. To, to be fair, I don't even know which person it was. I've only been to one meeting since I got up. I don't even know the person's name. I'm not defending them. Whoever the young lady was that sat at that desk and opened them up and you could put them on a flat surface and open it up and came out and said, okay, it was Mr. Rivera. Who also is the winner. And he was sworn in. So, since I've been here, a process that I understood and make an assumption that was accepted and voted on and said, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna establish this process has been followed. I will agree that at the meeting before, the mayor offered to change that process. And that this council absolutely shut that down. And said, no, we're gonna keep doing the process that we did. And that's it. So either Mr. Rivera's presence, but if, if the process is found to not be legal, then Mr. Rivera's presence on the board is not legal. Your presence on the board isn't legal. Mr. Florence's presence on the board wasn't legal. Mr. King's presence on the board wasn't legal. Everyone who ever went through the process that was established long before I got in is not legal. Only one of those two things can be true. My belief is that a board, and there's, there's talk about we have to do a motion, a second, et cetera. My belief and my, my only understanding of this would be that that part of it was handled when the process was established. They said, this is how we're going to do it. And that's how it's been done. And that's what courts are for. So either that process that was established and followed is legal or not legal. That can be sorted out at court somewhere if necessary. But that's how it was done. That's how it was followed. I have no opinion on how the mayor scored his sheets. If absolutely, I don't have
None.
It's neither.
I, I have no opinion on how the mayor scored his sheets. I'm not taking up for the mayor. I've already agreed sign. I don't have to be nice to anyone. I, I really wish, I really wish that, that this So I'm okay with members of the council not agreeing with me. I'm okay with members of the public not agreeing with me. That's fine. If that's, I'm a First Amendment bully. Everyone has a right to their opinion. Does not bother me enough. Um, I encourage if some members of the council do not agree with how he scored his sheets, that's something that you guys can and should discuss, work out. That's why, you know, a representative of the republic is great. Halt these things out. But the system that was in place allowed each council member to, to score how they wanted to score. If some council members aren't asking of how it was scored, that's not a legal question. That is a, a judgment question.
It's an integrity question.
Well, I'm not the integrity.
Yeah. And I, I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the integrity issue.
Well, that's something to discuss with the mayor. I mean, I've given you the legal I might answer your question.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as in.
I was on the board when all the people was voting in.
You are. You're the, you're the last man standing.
It was done right here. Right here in front of everybody. The voting was done right here in front of everybody, passed up to Connie. She did them right there. That's how it was handled. You said you weren't sure. How Jason and Travis, it was all done right here. They wasn't done in that background.
I don't think
Both went, turned in on Friday and then we ran them Monday at the end of the meeting.
I watched the video. They were all done right here.
Just, I just remember you. A lot of stuff, but you just go right through it. You listen to people, just move right on. What, what, what is your agenda for this town? What do you have? I mean, anytime you make sense on it, you're jumping on. Everybody that says anything, you're always right. You just move right on. Like it's not even been brought up.
These meetings just drag on and on and on. Stuff that's not even on the agenda. The bottom line is this town has been operated off of feelings instead of facts. There was nothing in place. We did the best we could with whatever he did, what he did, I don't know. But I know it was discussed. And we asked questions, bottom line questions of how it was supposed to be done. And it never became an issue until the wrong, the, the candidate was chosen. So that's when the issue became about. It wasn't the process. The process is that the, the, the problem at hand is not the process because the process we did not choose. And you, you and Mr. Coon told us what the process was and we went with it. The issue is, is that he voted zeros and that everyone feels it's unfair. So let's call a cat a cat or a dog a dog. The process just became an issue. The, the, the bottom line issue is that he gave the candidate zeros, which I think is a fair concern. But if, and, and the fact is, is that moving forward, there should be a process in place. And it needs to be, bottom line, if zero exists, you get five if you're a Fort White candidate. You get this if you're that. But none of that was in place. So you can't rewind and go backwards and put it in place because as the attorney said, if it's put in place for him, if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gainer. So we have to go back and do everybody that was done like that. So I think this is a special meeting. His agenda to the town is not what's on the agenda. So we need to move past this, these nine o'clock meetings and going on and on and on. It needs to come to a stop. We need to feel facts and not feelings. And that's the only way we're gonna move forward.
If, if you will go back and watch the film, which ain't up yet, but can't, nobody see it. It's not online. I don't know why. My grandson can get it online in two hours. We did, we did say that this wasn't right before the meeting started. Not before he got put into seat, before it started. We both said this me, this is not, this movement is not right.
Mister, can I read it?
Yes.
You got the gun.
I'm gonna say the same thing. That was the process.
Sorry.
Big name.
You got lost in the shuffle, sorry.
Alexander Vega, basically to reiterate, reiterate what was already or just said, this process had been done the same way since Travis King had included, and they were not motioned or seconded for approval. Nor him, nor Jason Florence, nor Catherine. Catherine's video, or that meeting is on YouTube. She came at the end of that meeting. She was sworn in, sat down, and that was it, meeting adjourned. I understand that there shouldn't be a procedure, should be in writing, this is what we do, that should be done, but that's not where we are right now. If the concern is, and I think everyone knows that we all disagree, that he voted everybody zero, throw out his vote. He still wins because you guys still voted him how you thought. And if the procedure is like, well, then let's go for vote number two, then you would have been at 50/50 at that point. 50/50 would have been for, uh, Mr. Rivera. The other 50 would have been for Ronnie. And that would have been motion approved and just gone nowhere because no one's going to budge on who they wanted for the candidacy. So I think the procedure needs to be established today, a workshop to move forward. But you stated there was a matrix. There was no matrix. There were a set of questions, vote one to 10, zero wasn't an option, but both of you voted zeros on other candidates.
That was very refreshing. You could say that. Excuse me.
I just wanna say, yeah. I'm asking the public, hopefully this will be on video, that this is the mayor that was elected. These are the actions. He's been consistent with his actions of thinking that it's a mayor strong council where he just does what he wants to do. And I'm not here to change who sits in the seat. I'm here to point out that he scored all zeros, which anybody with a squirrel's IQ can see that that would cancel out any other votes of another candidate. And I emailed several times that where's the matrix? We can't do this without a rubric. And Kelly, who was new, she didn't know what I was talking about. And, and I had, I'll say this, I had assumed that she was one and even questioned Connie when she was still here at that meeting. I guess that was the December meeting. And she was gonna email us the next day, which she did not. Um, but it's just wrong. It's just, it's just wrong.
So, Mayor, just to clarify, everybody is questioning, why is it a big issue? Why is it a big issue for the board now? I filed a complaint. I sent a letter to the council. I notified them of violations law. I notified them of discrimination against the white candidates. I notified them of violations of the sunshine law, the town charter, resolution twenty twenty-two, act twenty-seven, which establishes the rules of order, which requires all official business of the town be made by motion and second and a vote by the council. That's a resolution that the town adopted that establishes how they make decisions. And so if they don't follow that, it's an unofficial act. And I only challenged one position, one, one appointment. I wasn't here for the candidates. I wasn't here for the others. So why would I challenge those? When I brought it to the attention of the council, apparently a couple of board members researched it and said, "Okay, I picked the right." That's it. So it's not because, you know, Catherine thinks that it was okay that her appointment was made that way, but she doesn't want to know. She, she's not complaining, I am. So if it's not resolved here, it's gonna be resolved in a court of law. And the courts will award me, award attorney fees and costs. So it's gonna cost the town council and the residents of Fort White dollars that they don't have. They can't even afford to operate the sewage plant when the free sewer plant is built. So how, how are they gonna, you know, pay for a lawsuit? Which is an easy win. I don't care what, you know, Attorney Lander says. I really don't. I mean, because I, I, I can read and I can interpret what a resolution says. And so therefore, if it wasn't voted on, it's not official. I didn't challenge Catherine. So if they want to challenge it, that's fine. I mean, she just said it. If you want to challenge it, challenge it in another meeting. Personally, I think the council ought to vote on it tonight. Excluding Mr. Rivera, because it's a council event, on him to vote, vote on his own appointment. The council voted on it. Whether or not they want to appoint Mr. Rivera, if everybody votes for it, that's final. We all vote. So what, what are the parts of the council because as.
I don't like to make a motion, so we could go home.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to have a full council vote to appoint Mr. Dennis Rivera to the vacant District Two Town Council seat. And of course, that would exclude you from voting. By the second.
Mr. Lander? Mr. Rivera's already been appointed to the council. He's already been sworn in. Nothing in the charter says that once someone is sworn in, then you can exclude them from trying to reach the vote. What may have to happen is what Mr. Harrell. If someone. What's that? That's, that's my point. I'll end with that.
I make a motion that the town council removes all candidates that was appointed under the same process and be voted back in correctly.
I second that motion. All in favor of removing all the town candidates who were put in via the appointment process to then vote them back in, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? You can't, you can't remove. I, I, that's what I'm just saying.
This is your mayor.
Now, this would be an official action, but anyway.
Miss, Miss Terry, I think she was trying to do the same thing.
She mocked you.
No. I think both. Both you guys are coming at it from different angles.
Are you telling me to hang up yet?
I.
I say lovingly.
Yes, well, I, I knew first you guys, and I have a little. Sorry, I was there. Plenty of this folks' house that you should be speaking. Um, you can't remove each other. You can't remove each other. I'm not aware, and I wouldn't feel comfortable with advising a scenario where this board voted to remove people who have been sworn in and sworn out of office and are appointed now to sit on this council.
So what are the resolutions? I mean, why are we here?
I. I guess, I guess.
If I wanted to step down right now.
You can resign. You can resign.
You can resign.
Everyone on the board can resign.
You can resign. And I, I can't, I can't, you know, because of my, uh, my voice. But I'd like to say something, you know, I have come to several meetings and, um, it's embarrassing. I came to this meeting, uh, the last meeting and, um, it was, I was not on the agenda, I guess. Um, this whole vote thing, that wasn't till the end of the meeting. But I, I stood in the back and all I heard is mud slinging. That's why I said it's so refreshing, refreshing. You know, we're adults. And you keep, you keep saying, Terry, um, Terry, that, you know, you were thirty years a school teacher. You know, I think one of the first things that, that, that's taught to us is we can get a message across without putting somebody down, without disparaging them, without embarrassing ourselves. We talk about, you know, the small town, the strong, and, and I agree, you know, I stand behind all of that. But we, we air out all this nonsense and, and this dirty laundry so everybody around us can see it and hear it and, and watch it and we watch it again and, and pass it on to everybody else. And we should learn something from this. This is ridiculous. We're all adults. And all we do is we, we get up here and we call him a, a, a a racist, you know, discriminatory. I mean, we, we pulled everything we could out of the box to nullify and get our message across. That was not necessary. Get strong. And you feel strong about this one thing, that's all you gotta hinge on. That's all you gotta, you don't have to pull it all, I mean, you know, you were trying so hard. So I'm gonna make it easier. I'm just gonna step down. If, if you guys want to have another election the way you're, you're supposed to have it, whatever that is, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that. If I give a vote in, I don't give a vote in. I'm okay with that. I don't need that. Hold on, let's, let's be respectful. But I will say, you know, I, I did, I did, I did try to run before when, when Ryan was mayor. And, um, I don't know what the process was. All I, I was told, "Hey, sorry you didn't get it." "Oh, okay." That was it. I left it alone. Because this is a lot of town. It's not, I'm not gonna fight over a position, you know. How, how effective am I gonna be if they don't want me on the town, on the board? So I left it alone. Did I cry discrimination? Oh, no. I didn't, there was no, there's no need for that. It's a small town, really. You got blacks, you got whites, you got everything here. You got Hispanics too, believe it or not. You can't cry discrimination. It's such a small town. We need each other, really. Thank you for what you said. I mean, you, you brought it home and you didn't have to put anybody down. You know, I mean, it was just, it was done so nice and, uh, and refreshing.
I could be wrong, but I think we have to make a motion to accept.
No, you don't. Oh, yes.
In the past, you have voted to approve someone's resignation.
You can't vote against it.
You can't.
Yeah, you can't force them to stay. The procedure is that you vote for it, accept it.
It wasn't done with Mr. Florence. Everybody, everybody come in order. You guys, go ahead, say, say your name.
My name's Ryan Jackson. We did an application and then we pledged to the plan. All of you guys couldn't. Somebody's arguing because we disagree. We're all able to agree to disagree and move forward as a town. Even though Mr. Rivera just resigned in here today, what is the fixing plan? Because you still gotta pick a seat. So how do you fill that seat now that that is even in place? Do you go back and keep doing business the way we did the business? Do y'all come up with a new way of doing business? Because you're gonna have the same thing if we go through with old sheets and you score zeros or you score zeros, well, how do you do it? How does this town move forward from here? Again, this is a very small town. And if we keep arguing, every time we get new councils, every time we get a new mayor, we ain't going nowhere. And what's gonna happen? Fort White's gonna be white spray if you don't watch it. Fort White's gonna be white spray. The charter has already taken over and white spray is gonna lose their charter. And Fort White's gonna lose its, it's gonna fix its mess.
And that's true. Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other comments?
I have a council comment.
You're right, you're right.
Are we on one or two now? Where's that? I think it's on one. Go ahead, guys, go ahead.
I just want, and I know I'm repeating myself, but in case one person missed my message.
Nobody did.
It was not about the Mr. Rivera, my neighbor, Mr. Harrell, or Mr. Richardson, who we all know again. Um, it was about the flagrant zeros and the integrity of the office of the mayor. And that is who, with five of us, if we ever fill the seat, that is who is leading our town. And so I just want to encourage y'all to stay involved and voice your concerns, voice your praises, voice your criticisms. Stay involved.
I, I would say something to you.
Say your, say your name.
Yes, Karen Harrell. And that, that was the, um, you mentioned the zeros again. There were four candidates. Three of those candidates received all zeros, including, are you a resident of Fort White? Well, if you're running for council, yes, obviously you are. So how could candidates be scored zero on those? That, that is my question. And one candidate, um, scored ten on everything. And yes. Oh, were you gonna answer that or are you?
I did, I did tell him, I did.
Okay. Okay, but why? I mean. Oh, you get, okay. All right, well, that, thank you then for clarifying that. I'll have to go back and, you know, watch those minutes. And, um, as far as Rivera, I know he's a retired officer. Um, thank you for your service. I retired also from a sheriff's office as a deputy, so all my respect for that. But the zeros, that's, I think, that really got me because I, I think that's just disrespectful. And it's not, uh, somebody, I don't know who it was, mentioned integrity. That, that is a, being from law enforcement, that is, I, I see that as dishonest and a lack of integrity. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so now that we are where we are, do we want to move on to agenda item two?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any suggestions to have? I, I, I didn't think you could with a, aside from just voting. I didn't think you could with the specific procedure. Go ahead.
One thing, and I guess this may not be exactly relevant to the section two, but if you're thinking about developing something to appoint the seat of Mr. Rivera that's resigned from, it may be past the sixty day mark. I don't know exactly when Mr. Florence resigned. We gotta check and see.
I think today might be the sixtieth day.
Will we start new? Do we want to step down?
No, you can extend it.
We can ask to be extended, what charter's in.
Well, I, anyway, I think that, again, the board, any other two law ensues, that we should make sure that the council is within the rights to appoint someone, we don't have to send it to the governor.
Okay, so.
I have a.
I guess, wait, hold on. So I guess what do you think about, um, he was appointed and then just now stepped down? As far as if that would reset the clock or not?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Not, okay. I'm gonna ponder that. Okay.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I think in the charter, it does mention, it says a reasonable, let me see what it says, the second. Uh, it says in the event that there was not a quorum. Oh, we do that with more. Town council.
It just basically starts the process over. My suggestion would be.
Well, we can extend the same place.
Because it's so heated in here now that we adjourn and gather thoughts of how to either scale the scores or just agree to have an open interview. Um, and I sent several emails stating both of those things to the town clerk and, um, it might have, it might have just been Kelly because she was sick a lot of the time. But that if we do it in front of the public, then the public will, will just, and we make a motion, second the motion and vote.
Yeah, and, and look, I don't just, that's what I said in January.
And I'll say the same thing again. I was thinking there, again, I've never been anywhere where there wasn't a scale to guide your numbers. Was it the restaurants or the F-Cat or whatever?
As, as far as to Mr. Lander's point, um, whether or not we even still have the authority, that we can at least try. So it says, uh, such appointment shall be made within sixty days of the vacancy unless such time period is extended by the town council. So maybe we should, maybe just to cover our six.
I think that, I think that you should consider because there's at least a threat by, uh, so what you're going on with, with the assumption is now that Mr. Rivera was legally appointed. Since you've been threatened with a lawsuit that's set out aside if he's not legally appointed, then if you appointed somebody because you thought you had an additional sixty days because someone was illegally appointed, then that person wouldn't be legally appointed either. And so I think that the council should at the very least, uh, consider and vote on extending the sixty day appointment process to try to preserve the right for this council to pick a new council member rather than as the governor.
Okay, so the floor is.
I think you have a comment out there first.
For a motion? Okay.
Sir.
Yes, hold on, we're, we're delivering. The floor is up for a motion to extend. The, uh,
How many days?
What, what process?
How many days will it be good?
Another sixty days?
I'll make a motion, I just. How many days we need to make a motion for? Do we need to put a date in it or?
I'd say do another, yeah, do another sixteen days.
I'll make a motion that we extend the voting process sixty days so, till we can figure out, uh, to vote on another member or revote on what we had.
Not using the current process.
All in favor of extending by sixty days, say aye?
Uh.
Opposing, aye? Pass the vacancy. And so with the bag, I guess any other comments on agenda item number two?
No, be.
Yeah.
I signed it up.
Oh, yes, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
So for clarification, it kind of sounded like Attorney Lander was saying that the appointment was valid and that you all didn't vote to invalidate it. But then as soon as we had a resignation by a council member, he said that it was valid and you'll have to extend the name. So on that point, I would like to point out that there was an appointment. So, on that point, I would like to point out that there was an appointment that was considered valid and had a legal opinion that it was valid. And he sat in that chair for what? We could do. So we just had some vacancy and heard what starts the time from today, in my opinion. I don't understand why it was valid for a minute and then after resignation it was no longer valid.
That's not what I said. I think, yeah, do you have any answer to the question?
Yeah.
Can I answer it?
You answered the question, but I think it's not what you said.
It's not what I said.
You wanted to ponder it, so go ahead, cover our six.
Yeah, okay, so it's not what I said.
But go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
I said that I believe that the appointment was valid. But since there has been a threat, or whatever word you wanna use on threat, the, the discussion of, of a tactic that will lead you to a bit, maybe that would be successful, in my opinion, successful. Do you know? And so my advice, which I think is good advice, is to, in a preponderance of caution, to extend the appointment, which will also give this council an opportunity to develop the criteria by which you're gonna pick your next council member so that we don't go through this argument again. I think that's fair and reasonable. It's not a, uh, judgment on whether I think that the appointment was valid. I believe the appointment was valid based on what's, or what my knowledge is of the process as it was established. I mean, yeah, could be wrong. But why chances? So it's not, it's not a debate, I think. The citizen is trying to get into a debate, I don't want a debate when I'm knowing, you know, it's not, it's not what we're trying to do. I'm trying to give you guys, good advice, all of you, good advice to get through this, which I think is gonna best enter the town.
So Mr. Chairman, uh, I asked that, if items of appointment being valid, it says resignation also valid, for the record. At this point. It says resignation from the council also valid.
What do you mean, is it valid?
The seat is vacant once again.
The seat has become vacant.
Look in the seat.
Yes, you're right, I'm, I mean, I wanna be clear here. It's, it says resignation.
Just answering a question.
It's not my character in here.
If, if, if.
Yes?
If it were invalid, then it wouldn't be up to me to decide anyway.
Okay, yes, did anybody answer their question?
Yes.
Okay. I formally withdraw my complaint to the town of Fort White Council. And I have input on item number two. For moving forward in a fair way. My input on that is that a, appointment process should be put in place and should be voted on by the four council members that are current seated. And the majority, you know, passed, you know, followed the resolution, a motion, a second, the majority voted and have that put in running so that everybody follows the same process. If you talk in, come up with a scoring system or whatever, then have each council member just take a vote in the open. That's my input. Follow the town charter, follow Resolution twenty-two at twenty-seven. And be fair and, and conduct it in the sunlight. We don't have any problems.
Thank you, okay, so.
I agree.
Do we want to hash this out and come up with a new system right here, right now? Or do we want to nerd and bring this up out of nowhere?
What I suggested earlier. What I suggested earlier is because of the heat of the situation that we adjourn this meeting, gather our thoughts and research how to appoint in the future.
I think we've been told how. Did you not tell us what the state statute was this for?
I did.
Well, I might be crazy here, but, but upon his resignation, does that now require advertisement again? Or do we select from the candidates remaining? There were three remaining.
If the seat just got vacant, then it's just like it is now. You gotta start a whole process over and that's too social.
I think you have to.
The whole, so, so, okay, so if, if.
The process starts in a period. So when I say the process starts again, that's why you guys should discuss what that process should look like. But right now, the seat is vacant, which means that because we're starting at the beginning, then whatever process you guys decide needs to be followed. The deadline wrapped.
Really, babe?
It's the whole process that starts over, so you have a new deadline.
Active sign. What it is.
Now, yeah, we got something else. If what our process is gonna be.
Exactly. First thing is the new deadline for applicants.
We got a time.
I knew deadline.
Okay, what, I mean. We can wait that for, yeah, we gotta open it up for applicants, yeah.
So even the most around, can run, even the ones that run the last time. Even the ones that vacated their seats.
Yeah, right.
It's just like you was adding, like, we saw all of it.
Yeah.
So the question is, okay, yeah, so we, we have some sort of, you know.
Kind of like groundhog day.
So we have an open, right? Keep it open for a set period of time? I think what really, what we really need to figure out and hammer out is what is the vote, right? What is the actual voting or ranking or scoring mechanism? What's that going to be? If, if we have, yeah. Anybody on the panel there?
There needs to, in my opinion, there needs to be a point system if we're going to use that sheet. I'm just using this as an example. A resident, you could give them ten for that, or we could agree that if they lived in Fort White, well, actually, the charter, the resolution says.
I think that we do away with the point system.
That's why we do it.
If they up the process, I mean, the, the election or whatever it is, every member writes down who they want, you pass it up to whoever, they say this person got one point, this person got the next point, and move forward. And that way, nobody can give nobody zero, nobody can give nobody ten, it's a yes or no, just like Kamala Trump, yes or no. What else?
Amen.
So everybody writes yes or no on a candidate?
No. Write two candidates down and pass it.
Do it just like a vote. Vote like they even passed down a vote against them. More or less, that's why we're here now.
And maybe, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but what if it's tied?
Well, then, if.
So that's part of the.
Y'all better get together, but on the same one.
I agree with that.
That's more or less not gonna be a tie. I mean, we've done it like that before. If there's not the three people, you score one through three. You, you would pick your first one, your second one, you'd burn it.
So you rank them.
You rank them. And that's what we've done before. That was more or less not gonna be a tie that way. Because that still can be the standard, but you're less likely to have a tie.
So if we do it.
You have five people, you got one, two, three, four, five.
If we do the ranking, okay.
But now, I just.
Yeah, we, no, we get the. Cause then, yeah.
You have three, you got three, you have two, you just got two. I mean, depending on how many people, how many advocates you get.
That's the thing, right? Cause if it's two, excuse me, the same vote, it's one or two.
Yeah, you could be. I agree.
There's gotta be like.
There can be, there's nothing flawless with, with four people.
We gotta have a way of breaking ties, wasn't it?
There's, there's nothing.
Well, if the parents of the mayor did not vote, perhaps we.
If he had a vote, he'd have.
So in the, in the, in the, in the ordinance that is being applied, that was part of your special meeting request, I just said that. Mayor, well.
We did that for our company, but we did that a couple.
Yes. Mayor, get to the.
It's not, it was, is, what, the level is that flawless? I mean, they're gonna stipulate, you'll get a tie. I didn't remember exactly.
I don't remember, but it's, it sounds like it's one or two or three. There's gotta be, there's gotta be a tie breaking mechanism.
Yeah.
What, what, what was it? Okay.
I'm not saying not to be stupid, um, you're saying that if we can't, well, if we can't agree on someone, the governor will. Because.
Have you ever seen any tie breaking?
I've seen councils work it out.
Work it out.
There you go.
Yes.
Revote.
There you go.
Revote, make votes.
And a motion approves, it fails, then.
You can have a one or two, and then y'all are voting on one or two, cause number three would be out by now. If it was just three candidates. And y'all work it out, and we might be a dumb day boss.
It's not like a coach.
Sound like a pastor that's got some sense.
So.
We ready to go home.
Okay, go ahead, uh.
I'm James Richardson, I've been around here a long time. Um, I love to cover, a lot of things are over quickly.
Okay, okay, then just go ahead.
The dirty underwear, wearing dirty laundry, perhaps that should be changed more quickly. Uh, all this started with the same seat, this or two, when the attorney's opinion, not me.
Thank you.
Previously, decided, because I ran for mayor, I had resigned my seat. And it's been empty of an elected person ever since, and it's been a revolving chair. This needs to be put into, what I would like to see, if I was at one of those seats tonight, I, I'll just talk, it's great, this is how you get to it, but let's put it all on paper and have copies made so that I can look at it and it's like, okay, this is it, it's the black and white, this is what we're gonna vote to approve. Not when everyone's conversations come out, it's not, because you couldn't remember what was said. Uh, and you might wanna, once it's in writing, edit it, make some changes. Uh, you have the power to do that, you should do it. Um, but the point, the big point that I hope somebody will remember is that when we change our leaders regularly, what you do is you get rid of everybody that knew what was. There's supposed to be a book here somewhere with the actions previous council and in the past four months, I've seen y'all do over again stuff that was already done. But nobody knows it, they, nobody knows where to look for it. We need a qualified work experience who knows how to do that. So that's why that job is safe, people, for that group and. And I thank everybody for coming tonight. Um, it's all about our town, we all love it, that's why we're all here.
Thank you, thank you.
With Mr. Rivera had his hand up, we should hear from him.
Hold it, Mr. Rivera.
No, I'm just, you know, we're trying to figure out how to break a tie if you guys wanna take a vote. Right now, we don't have a tie. You should have the, uh, the community here that took an interest to be here, uh, break the tie.
It's a good thing.
Work it out.
No, work it out. We was voted in, or seat, or, or sitting seat, I'm not. I've been running, nobody contested my run, so I've been unopposed. Uh, so I don't really know about the vote. James is the last one to vote it.
I think that the tiebreaker should be. So we have some ground set in place with the score sheet. The score sheets are turned in and sealed in case there's a tie. And the two candidates that if there's a tie with, then whoever scored the highest, but have some parameters in place so people can't get zeros and tens or whatever. If there is a tie, then you open those sheets that night for tho, and those two candidates only. Whoever scored the highest, then we vote him in. I mean, that's.
So you would need some sort of criteria to do it.
Right.
Uh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, but, uh, Gibson, I, I, I don't think it's that difficult. I think that what I'm understanding is, let's say you have a tie. Well, you can't have a four-way tie, so you got two candidates, they're the ones that are in play. So now you vote on those two. You're not gonna have a tie, cause there's four of you, unless two and two.
And that's what's in.
And if you have that tie, then, then, you know, maybe it's like you gotta go over, just the mayor's the only one that has a voice, or he doesn't have a voice.
No.
But however, however, I just think that you.
I'm George O'Donnell, my name sounds a little bit familiar, I'm the mayor's brother. And with regard to the voting process, right, you can do, like everybody says, right, when you finish best, so, for example, after dinner, I think Lonny's best, right? He's first. You do second and third as well, right? You categorize all the candidates, everybody that's submitted or contributed, uh, a resume, a CV, has to be voted up. But it's gonna be quite a.
Wait them.
Wait them. First place, all first place votes is five points. All second place votes get three points. Third, two, fourth, one, and you can just do it based off of, if you get the most first place votes, it stands to reason that you will also get the most points. It's almost like an electoral type process, right? If you get second four times and somebody gets first two times, it's possible that they might not win because they didn't accumulate the most amount of points. This way, the favorite overall candidate, both by me, mean the average, and most likely, the one that's the overall favorite will always be the best candidate, will always be the winning candidate.
That, that is unlikely to result in a tie.
And also, that's the point.
Provided that the scoring, that the score system that you're suggesting is honored by each of the.
So.
It's not, it's not your choice.
So, council, there is no integrity or not, as I, you know, as I said to begin with, everybody must vote or categorize one of, I'm gonna just say four members for just the single argument. It could be twenty-five members, you know, something, whatever. Every single member must be put in order. So for you, you know, like I said, Lonny might be first, Dennis Rera might be second, James might be third, and then some other candidate. And some of the candidates, you know. If, if you don't vote that with integrity, you're only hurting yourself. Right? You're, you're putting the first.
Putting them in order.
And everybody else has to be voted up.
And you can, you can rate it, you can rate it by the, you can weight it by the rank it's in, so one is one point, two is half a point, three is a third point, four is a quarter point.
But every position gets accumulated a second of points as well, as its position.
Or a special. Yeah, so.
Can I ask a question?
Is it worth a shot?
Does, uh, Robert's Rules of Order specify how appointments should be made? Does it give the approval? Processes? I believe it does.
Either way.
But, I mean, would it be advisable to look at Robert's Rules and see what the following procedure is for making appointments? Cause I mean, we can, we can come up with all these algorithms, you know, equations to determine, but, you know, nothing beats you all standing up there or sitting up there in front of the action, voting everybody and saying, I vote for. And raise your hand, you know, when they say your candidate's name.
And that's great.
The, actually, the only thing that, uh, I've heard the attorney, Mr. Lander say today that made most sense was, you vote, you have a tie, then you work it out amongst yourselves. Take a note of vote, you know, and, and, you know, vote to come up with a tiebreaker. But every official action of the council needs a motion, a second, and a vote, or it's an unofficial action, so.
But if that doesn't work, then what?
It has to go.
Or we do the ranking system?
Or we won't go home.
Or we do the ranking system? And the votes are turned. Who they want first, who they want second, who they want third, who they want fourth. If we vote to approve that as the formal, then. Then it's by, then it's by the turn of the vote. Does anybody have?
Well, I mean, he, he, he said same thing, I mean.
Yeah, he said, he said, yes.
Can I, can I ask a question, please?
Wait, 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 one second. What was that? Was that councilman you?
Me and her were talking about the way he just said, the way I said earlier, you score one through however many candidates there are. And you pick your best and go down to your word.
Okay, would you like me to make the motion as far?
Well, I mean, we were discussing. Ms. Terry didn't hear what we was talking about, so she would be involved in this. I mean, that makes sense. Same thing, I mean, we're talking the same thing, that makes sense. You score one through however many candidates there are, at your highest number is your best one.
Of what, a certain number of points, so.
Well, his number one, if they would just say five. If his best one was, so it's, he'd get five points. And then on down, if it wasn't a three, it'd be one through three. And. I mean, yeah, the lower it gets, the closer it is going to be a tie, yes, no doubt. But, I mean, there's no foolproof way of doing it. There's no foolproof way of doing it.
And we can do it, so we can do it by, yeah, we, we can assign points, we can assign points from one being five, two being four, or, or we can just do it.
It depends on how many candidates.
But that's what I'm saying, so if we just, we can just do it based on, the first one, you get one point, the second one, divided by two, half a point, the third one, third point, fourth one, a quarter point, fifth one, point two.
So I have a question, are you going to vote at all, or just go by score? So if you go by the score, you're doing the same thing, you just.
So, let me ask you, let me ask you this later, if we approve this method by formally, by motion and a vote?
I mean, if you approve this method by a motion and a vote, then that establishes the procedure. If you want to make folks who would claim that an outcome of the result is somehow flawed, then once the winning candidate is announced, you should vote on it again, just so you, it's kind of getting a double blessing. Vote on, establish a procedure, and then you can vote on it again when the person is picked, that way there can't be any question. And then they, if anyone has any issues, what's happened in the past, let that be all it may.
So what you're saying, once the person is announced with the highest, whatever.
Yep.
We make a motion to vote that person in and all the things they got and all.
Do it one more time. You've approved the process and you've approved it again after the process process.
Okay, so. So like, whatever, one is five, or is it depend on the?
It depends on the number of applicants.
And that's, so if it's four, one is four.
Right.
If it's ten, one is ten.
Right.
Okay.
Um, is there?
We could, oh, go ahead.
Um, is there also a possibility of, um, instituting a process to, to limit the number of candidates, because we don't want, it's unlikely.
You could have a deadline, a deadline on application, but you can't limit.
So you can have a little time, right?
You could have, but sadly won't do after the night.
I'll just one more consideration also, because mathematically, let's say you have, it doesn't matter, we're going to just assume that we had, what, four or five members?
Uh, four.
Four.
Four. You don't want to, you don't want to do it necessarily five, four, three, two, or, you know, consecutive numbers, if you have, um, let's say half the candidates are second and first, and they're vice versa, the other half of the councilmen is valid, so that's, that's to say, you have a first place, your candidate for first, and Mr. Cruz candidate for first is the same person, and both of your candidate is also the same for second, while in this condition, uh, councilman.
We could swap, we could swap it vice versa as a tie.
Right, it would be a tie, because two first would have five, two first would have five, two second would have four, four, right? So you ultimately end up with two candidates both having nice points.
I think that's true mathematically, but I think it's unlikely.
It's not unlikely, if, there's a likelihood that two of the councilmembers are going to vote the same way, and the other two councilmembers are likely to vote the same way, so to eliminate that, instead of having a five-four, where you have consecutive numbers allocated to a specific candidate, you, you lower that threshold instead of it being one number from five to going up a five to three. Okay, so the second member is awarded less points, more than one less point.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
I'm trying to simplify it for you guys, but it's not coming out simplified. My point is this.
We're trying to stop the two candidates from being.
Yes, because the, the most foolproof way to eliminate two candidates being tied in a situation where we have an even number of board members is to separate the number of points this allocated to any given member. Okay, so first place would get five, the second place would not get four, they should get three or two.
Yeah, like the weight disparity.
Exactly, ultimately, what you're trying to do is weigh, you're trying to weigh, you know, the position of, of the vote, or the, the candidate's position.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Roseanne.
I would just want to know, when is the next meeting?
March seventeenth.
So you got two weeks to think about it. I think that everybody should maybe take a deep breath and look, other counties, other towns, other villages, Google across, across the border. And those, from now till the seventeenth, it's going to be. And I would say then you can come back and get your thoughts together, I've never heard of, of, of splitting points that way, and you maybe don't want to decide that, that you guys decide, are the deciders. I think maybe take a deep breath and research it a little bit, and see what other people do, and find something that works for you.
Yeah.
We could put marbles in the sack.
We can, uh.
Yes.
I, I think that no matter what.
Come on, go ahead.
What decision you guys make about which way you're going to go forward, I think that is a longer process, because I think it needs to be written, there has to be an ordinance, it has to be approved, it has to be read twice, so that there's a procedure for the next time, so that we're not here, the next time there's a vacancy, we're like, oh, now we got to go back on this procedure, oh, we're going to do it like we did before. But there's no written rule, no resolution on what that procedure is. So whatever you decide here today, then you put it paper and form into a resolution and you pass or approve it twice, and then you have that step.
Moving forward, I think that's a good idea. If the whole issue was, was my vote, do we want to just vote to throw off my score card? Retally and then appoint that person based on one, two, or three councilmember's votes?
Yeah, they have procedures.
Well, I'm saying, but for this one, for this one, if we vote and say, hey, we approved this per, that we can hammer out the procedures.
So you're saying you could counsel on a vote to throw out your card and report?
Yeah, right.
He's already resigned, which opened up a whole process.
He should be able to run again.
Okay, so, so let's do that, I guess, so we, do we want, want to go on it tonight?
I was about to think about it, I'd have to look for, just face there is something a little. I mean, we have a meeting in two weeks. It is a big meeting, everybody, the next meeting is down at the community center, March seventeenth.
Okay, so if that's.
It won't be here.
If that's the case, uh, we'll up for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we table the premises for the vacant town council until the.
Till the next meeting. I second.
Okay, I'll pay the side. Okay, I'll put a name. Okay, that's table lead, now, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion again.
Your second?
I second.
Your first side?
I.